I'm Councilmember Jose Weisar. We've been joined by Councilmember Dennis Zein and Councilmember Paul Coretts. And with that, can the Clerk or CLA read it first item into the agenda, please, into the record?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Charles Modd, CLA's office. Item one is an EIR and related SEQA documents and Bureau of Sanitation and City Attorney reports and draft ordinances related to implementing the city's policies to regulate single-use plastic and paper bags.
Thank you. At the previous meeting, we had the report before us, but we did not have the EIR. So we had the city attorney report. Now we have both before us today, and we've incorporated some changes from the previous meeting, and those changes have been incorporated. So with that, let me pass it over to our Public Works President.
Good morning. How are you, Chairperson Weisar, honorable councilmembers? My name is Kapri Maddox. As stated, I am the president of the Board of Public Works. Today, we're here to discuss the city's proposed single-use bag ordinance. Just to back up for a moment, you should know that in May of 2012, City Council directed the Bureau of Sanitation to conduct a full EIR on this matter related to the proposed ordinance. And I believe we have a number of supporters here on this issue, and I think we should just take a moment to remind everyone that there is an impact of littering. We have a lot of our rivers where we have many times we do our cleanups. I think there are people here that may be representative of Folar. As it relates to the cleanup of our rivers, we have a number of instances where plastic bags have a negative impact on the environment. Today, we actually are going to have a review of the proposed ordinance as well as a detailed explanation on the EIR. We have limitations on our time today, so I'm going to very quickly have Karen Koka from the Bureau of Sanitation to come forward and give you additional information on the proposed ordinance, and then we'll move on to discussions on the EIR.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Karen Koka with the Bureau of Sanitation. I'm going to pass my time to our consultant from Parsons Sprinkerhoff who handled the EIR preparation. She has a very, very brief presentation about the EIR. So, Irina, introduce yourself.
Hello. I'm Irina Finkelstein with Parsons Sprinkerhoff, preparer of the EIR for the proposed ordinance. And we would like to very quickly summarize the findings that we have come after doing the analysis in this document. So, well, what was addressed in the EIR and analyzed was the issue of having billions of single-use plastic carryout bags used in the city of Los Angeles, and when they are discarded, the plastic bags end up in the environment, and they affect communities' physical environment as well as the city's budget because the city spends millions of dollars on cleanup. The objectives of the ordinance, or what is under SEQA called the project, are basically to reduce those billions of dollars, billions of plastic bags that are used currently, reduce the environmental effects, the adverse environmental effects associated with those bags, and also deter the use of single-use paper bags in the city as well, and promote the use of reusable bags. And by reducing litter associated with the single-use plastic bags, the adverse effects on the environment, including the stormwater systems, aesthetics, marine environment, terrestrial environment, air quality, and all other issues. Now, the EIR was completed, the whole process was completed with extensive public outreach and public input that was given and received at each step of the EIR process. And that included, first, the initial study that told people that the EIR will be prepared and what issues will be addressed. It had its own 30-day public review. There were five public meetings. It was noticed in multiple newspapers in many different languages, was made available at the sanitation's website, all major libraries. Then, after the completion of the initial study, the draft EIR was prepared, and that one had its own 45-day public review period. There were seven public meetings, multiple notices in different language newspapers. It was available on the sanitation website. And finally, after the review and after receiving the public input, the final EIR was completed. That was completed in strict compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. And basically, what the EIR does, what the reason for doing EIR is to evaluate potential environmental effects of the proposed ordinance, provide responses to comments that were received from the public and any agency during the public review period, and provide this information to you, the decision-makers, and to the public. The analysis in the EIR basically came to the following conclusions. The proposed ordinance will result in beneficial impacts in a number of areas. That includes air quality. While when the proposed ordinance is implemented, it is anticipated that it would reduce air quality emissions substantially, the emissions that contribute to smoke by nearly 60 percent and over 40 percent the emissions that contribute to the acidity of rivers and the ocean. It will eliminate plastic bags from the environment where biological resources are present, and that includes sensitive habitats, habitat marine, coastal, river, and inland. It will improve water quality by eliminating the litter that could enter waterways, and it will also result in a beneficial impact on solid waste disposal. It will reduce the solid waste that being disposed in comparison with what is happening right now. The final EIR also addressed a range of other impact, other areas of environmental concerns that which included greenhouse gas emission, forest, mineral resources, hazards and hazardous materials, sanitation services, traffic noise, water, and wastewater. And the analysis concluded that the proposed ordinance would either have no impact in those areas, or if it will have an impact, it will be a less than significant impact. The final EIR also addressed alternatives to the proposed ordinance, which were no project, everything stays the same as right now, then banning both plastic and paper, single-use bags, banning plastic, single-use bags, but imposing a higher fee than the proposed 10 cents per paper bag right now, and then proposed ordinance without a grace period. And also, it included an alternative of imposing a fee on single-use plastic bags. The analysis of all those alternatives, which was very extensive, basically concluded that the alternatives, other than no project alternative, could achieve the objectives of the projects either more rapidly or maybe to a greater extent. But the proposed ordinance, as well as the alternative four, which is the proposed ordinance without the grace period, are consistent with the actions that were taken by other jurisdictions within the Los Angeles County. And because they will be consistent, they will eliminate confusion, and they will basically provide the same shopping experience within the city as in the adjoining area. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. No questions now, but thank you very much. What we will do is go into public comment, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. We have one minute per speaker. First speaker is James Stewart.
James Stewart. Panorama City's EIR is inadequate in three areas and should not be certified. Even if these things are not required by SEQA, you should have required them. There is no analysis of the replacement bags for the secondary uses of the banned bags, a situation that will probably eliminate the benefit of the ordinance. There is no analysis or acknowledgement of the increase in auto traffic that will be a result from people going to the market more often and buying less, and this is already happening. There is no lifecycle analysis of the alternate bags. I looked at my own stock. Seventeen had no label. One was made in the United States, and 14 were overseas, mostly in China. The bag from the Department of Sanitation is made in Pakistan. You will be solving your problem by creating a bigger problem someplace else that is irresponsible, unethical, and violates the stated reasons for doing this. This EIR is a hatchet job with unsupported assumptions and estimates that make the analysis useless. Your duty to the people of Los Angeles to put your egos aside and conduct a full and proper analysis before conducting this ordinance. And I'd like to have the full remarks put in the record.
Sure. Thank you. Jack Pillen? I think this is Jack, P-I-L-L-E-N? Allen? Jack Allen? I'm sorry, that's an A.
Thank you, members of the council. I am here to request that the final EIR be recirculated because it contains significant new information which would impact and affect the environment. I've outlined in my letter to you, in a 10-page letter, what this information is, and the law requires that if such information is included, it must be recirculated. I submitted a lot of comments, responses to them. Were non-responsive. I got the runaround on the answers. That is not allowed. They must give a reasoned and detailed answer in response to your comments. It was often not done. And so, for that reason, I'd like to have the committee rule on my request that the EIR be recirculated. They didn't consider alternatives that I submitted. And again, I appreciate a ruling on my request.
Thank you. Nathan Weaver?
My name is Nathan Weaver. I'm with Environment California, here to speak for our many members in Los Angeles and across the state. Thank you so much for taking on this important issue. Plastic pollution is a serious problem for the ocean and the animals that live there. Plastic bags are one of the worst forms of plastic pollution, and thank you all for your leadership, for the effort you've put into crafting an ordinance that's right for Los Angeles. I'm in awe of your work as civil servants, and let's get this done this June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kirsten James?
Kirsten James with Heal the Bay. I won't take much of your time. I've spoken before, you many times before, but on behalf of Heal the Bay, we just want to thank you all for your leadership on this issue and getting us along the long road that it's taken to get here today. As you know, the real debate has already occurred. We were in full council over a year ago and had a lively discussion and debate, and now it's time to move forward. Staff completed an appropriate environmental review, and no surprise that at the end of the day, we find that this ordinance is going to bring great environmental good to the city of L.A. So we ask that you move forward expeditiously and vote to move forward the EIR and the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Dubow?
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Dubow. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I spoke last week on the elimination of the bags because we support taking steps to reduce our waste while still recognizing the economic realities for businesses, large and small. I'll simply say thank you to the committee and the staff who've worked on this, and urge you to certify the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Yegli Kishin?
Yerick Kishin with the Central City Association of Los Angeles, representing our 350 members, employing more than 450,000 individuals throughout the Los Angeles region. We ask that this committee adopt the EIR in support of the proposed ordinance. As business leaders, we recognize the importance of being environmentally responsible and adapting to 21st century expectations about how we conduct our business. Therefore, we ask that the city move forward with the ordinance, which would bring about a single-use plastic bag ban consistent with the countywide model. This would be the preferred alternative for the city because it will ensure that the city achieves its significant environmental goals without sacrificing business opportunities within the city. We want to emphasize the importance of working collaboratively with all stakeholders to create balanced and meaningful policies that achieve their desired outcomes. And on this front, we want to thank the committee once again for their support and request your support in passing this ordinance through. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Arsonal?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Doug Arson of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing more than 370 businesses that employ more than 100,000 employees that shop at city grocery stores. VICA wants to thank the committee and the Bureau of Sanitation for working with our member businesses to develop a reasonable carryout bag policy that helps the city achieve its economic goals without hindering its environmental goals. We are proud to support the city's choice to move forward with the L.A. County model by banning plastic, instituting a 10-cent charge on paper bags, in order to allow retailers to recoup the significant cost of compliance and expand bag recycling and sanitation education programs. We also appreciate this committee's commitment to eliminate the six-month grace period where paper would be distributed for free, a policy that would have been devastating for retailers. We urge the council to move as quickly as possible, certify this EIR, and carry and enact this carryout bag ordinance, which will bring uniformity to the region and hopefully lead the change on statewide action. Thank you.
Sarah Sheehy?
I'm Sarah Sheehy with the California Grocers Association, and we'd like to thank the committee for working so hard with our industry to craft fair legislation that is good for the environment and good for retailers. We look forward to working with the city to educate our customers about the impending ban and make the transition as seamless as possible. Please certify the EIR and support the draft ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Hickman?
My name is Bill Hickman with the Surf Rider Foundation. Just wanted to come today to show our support, and thank you for allowing us to be part of the EIR process with the public hearings and commenting on it officially. And we just want to see you finalize the ordinance, so please move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Craig Cadwalader?
My name is Craig Cadwalader. I'm representing the Surf Rider Foundation South Bay chapter, and I'm passing out some pictures of a plastic bag that's stuck in the fountain right across the street from here that I took. These are also plastic bags out of Biona Wetlands. We've got to get rid of these things, and as you can tell, that's got a lot of growth on it. It's been in the water for a while. Did a lot of research on a certain attorney who's been threatening all the cities, and I can't find anywhere where he's won a lawsuit, so I would hope that nobody buckles down to some of the threats that have been thrown out, and I see no wins, and I hope you pass this bill very much so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Mr. Coretts? If you could press your button, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Enrique and all your staff, Irina and Karen, and everybody who's done such great work on this over the past year, putting together the Environmental Impact Report and taking so many public meetings and doing all the outreach that got us to this point. We want to get this plastic bag ban in place while this council and this mayor, who have worked so hard on this, are still in office. And so, we asked you to move it along, and you got it done, and you got it done with professionalism and a smile and graciousness, and we thank you for such great work. And we also thank all the advocates from Heal the Bay and Surf Rider and Environment California, Sierra Club, to all the business groups, from the chamber to VICA to CCA and everyone and the grocers who all came together and made this workable for everyone. I think it's a great solution. It'll be very consistent with other places like L.A. County, make this an effective regional ban, and be a great step in the right direction for our environment. So I thank everyone who is involved, and this is very exciting. Let's move it forward. And one other thing, it's often said that these reusable bags will benefit people in Pakistan and China and whatever. We're in the process of trying to put together a million-bag giveaway of locally manufactured bags, put together by veterans and former gang members, working with nonprofits, so that we believe this will create jobs all in the city of Los Angeles for the people most vulnerable and most in need. So this is a win-win in every possible way. Thanks for everyone involved, and let's move this forward today.
Thank you. Mr. Zein?
I'm starting to like the sound of this. You like that pronunciation? Enrique. You're going to do the enforcement. You're the enforcement agent, and how will the public know where to call when there's noncompliance? And who's going to do the enforcement?
Sanitation will do the enforcement. Councilmember, let me identify myself. Enrique Zaldivar, Director of Sanitation. The plan is for us and the intent is for us to do the enforcement. However, we believe that with all of the education that has taken place and more will take place between now and December, that there will be very little enforcement required. But to the extent that there will be, sanitation will be doing the enforcement.
And what kind of tools do you have for that enforcement?
We will have environmental inspectors in general who will be visiting stores and doing the foot patrol, if you will.
How many of those do you have?
We have none budgeted right now. We are going to be borrowing from other sites of our house in the meantime until we get a real sense of what extent and how much of the enforcement we will have to do.
So we're going to do enforcement, but at the present time, we don't have anybody do enforcement?
No dedicated inspectors, per se, but we have inspectors in sanitation that are very capable, who are very capable to do this enforcement, and we will do that on a part-time basis.
Is there any funding available so you have an enforcement that will be able to do? Because your inspectors already have responsibilities. Is there any funding? I know they're going to charge 10 cents a bag. Is there any funding being appropriated so you will actually have folks that can go do enforcement as the need arises? A dedicated force, or is it going to be an ancillary duty to those inspectors that you already have?
We don't have appropriated funding. We do have some funding that we will be able to use on a limited basis.
And how many inspectors do you have in the department?
We have 110 roughly inspectors in three areas of sanitation, industrial waste, watershed protection, and solid waste.
So if we need inspectors, we can utilize the resources of 110 that are already there?
Correct, on some kind of...
If we don't get compliance?
Basis, yes.
So hopefully, there'll be compliance. And the 12-month kick-in and the six-month kick-in, small stores, large stores, how are we going to give them that information? What's a large store? What's a small store? Who's kicking in 12 months? Who's kicking in, starting the program in six months? And there'll be confusion. How are we going to rectify that?
We have a pretty good demarcation between the two categories in our whole education and outreach plan, Councilmember Zein, that will... If I, I'm speaking out of league now, if you don't mind. Karen, do you mind addressing, because we have square footage that delineates one from the other?
I didn't want to stump you, Enrique. I just wanted to get some answers.
Well, and I'm going to paraphrase. So you want to know basically who it applies to and...
Well, no. We've got large stores and small stores, and there's certain requirements for a large store, certain requirements for a small store. The six-month kick-in for the large stores and the 12-month kick-in for the small store. So a proprietor says, "I don't know if I'm a large store or a small store. Am I six months a year?" And how are we going to come up with a formula so they'll understand when their compliance is required?
Well, first of all, we have extensive business databases in here in L.A., so I'll give you some examples of who's included in each, but we plan on notifying all the stores.
Okay, so they'll be notified by the city that this is the, you fall in this category?
Correct.
And you need to start it at this particular... So they'll all be notified?
Yes. We will notify all the affected stores. We'll make sure that they, we have staff to answer questions. We're having, we'll have a very large education campaign.
Because you know there'll be confusion with stores?
Yes, there is. And hopefully, we'll be able to hash that out. But the way that we look at it and the way that the ordinance is written is whether or not they have a grocery component, but groceries that include milk, bread, and perishable goods. If they sell those types of things, then they are covered. And I know I'm generalizing, John. I'm sorry. But in general, that's how it works. So if you're a Home Depot, you do not...
What about a Target that sells...
Target is included.
Okay.
Walmart, both of them, even the smaller Targets and Walmarts have a grocery area where they sell perishable goods and other types of groceries.
99 cent store?
99 cent store is included.
Okay, so if they're selling any kind of food product, then they would be included in this?
Well, the list in the ordinance is milk, bread. We don't really want to, because there was a question about, say, a Home Depot because they might have granola bars, and we're talking about a grocery component that has milk, bread, perishable goods, so...
Because Target traditionally didn't have a grocery component, and now they do.
Now they do.
So it's all changed. So whether they have a grocery component or not in that Target store, they'd be required to comply with this in the city of L.A. unless they're all converted? I don't know if they're all converted now or not.
If they have a grocery component, then they will be included. And actually, all the Targets that I've been in in the last five years have a grocery section, so they are included.
Okay.
And so those, the large stores basically has, the line of demarcation is both in size, 10,000 square feet or above, and also $2 million in annual sales. So that's going to be kind of the line. If you look at it with a large grocery store, you know, those are the large stores. January 1st, 2014 is when they would begin the, when the ban would begin, and they would begin charging the 10 cents. Then July 1st, it would be smaller stores. And by that, the list includes convenience stores...
7-Eleven?
7-Eleven, which, again, sells milk, bread, all kinds of food, AMPM mini-markets, help me out here, other small, Fresh &amp; Easy.
So they're going out of business?
They're, so...
According to the report.
Kapri Maddox from the Board of Public Works. I also would like to add that there are any stores with a type 20 or type 21 license issued by the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control as well. And I can go down the list of the exemptions for, on the small stores option, restaurants, dry cleaning shops, hardware stores, which would include a Home Depot, pharmacy bags, produce bags, used for bagging vegetation, you know, when you pick up your fruits and vegetables, also for meats. And then participants of California Special Supplemental Food Program for Women, Infants and Children, also known as WIC, or supplemental food programs, will receive reusable bags or recyclable paper bags to carry out those purchases. And so I just wanted to add that to the record.
So there will be stores that are exempt, and that's where the confusion will come into play, where someone's going to want to call and find out, is the smoking ordinance, you can't smoke in restaurants, bars, et cetera. Fire department does that enforcement. We're getting great compliance now. When that enforcement begins, and how are we going to get that number out to the public?
Well, I think that part of the outreach, we're going to have to set up a hotline. Part of that outreach is going to be making sure that people know where to call through the city resources, you know, our websites. We have Facebook, Twitter, which, you know, I don't use, but that's the only way my kids communicate. There... communicate. Their general and traditional outreach through the newspapers, through the radio, we're actually going to do a very large outreach, and part of that, just like we did when we were rolling out the multifamily residential recycling program, is we establish a hotline and we have staff that are there to answer questions. So we're going to avail ourselves of all the council offices and work through them and make sure that we reach everybody we need to talk to about it.
And on the reports, the stores that are required to do the quarterly reports, if they don't comply with that, what's the enforcement on that? If they don't comply with the requirement on a quarterly basis, reusable bag ban program?
Well, I believe that's covered under enforcement if they don't, but obviously it's going to take a little bit of time to get this started and to get the reporting in an accurate form, so we are going to, you know, work with them to make sure that the information is coming in.
Then who's going to keep that list? Is that going to be computerized? Is it going to be available to the public? Is it going to be able to do that documentation to list it?
I don't see why not. I mean, we certainly can post information on the success of the ban, you know, and the reductions in bag use on the city website.
Well, it requires that the stores that are impacted by this report to the city on a quarterly basis.
Yes.
And how that ban is moving forward, and if they don't comply with that, if they for every reason don't do it, and if the public is inquiring the mechanism for that. So is that going to be part of sanitation? Do they have people assigned to do that? I mean, are we doing something that's going to have some teeth to it? Are we just going to try and sound pretty and not have the teeth? Because I think it's a great program, but we need to have the teeth to make sure there's compliance.
Well, I think it's a, the carrot and the stick. I mean, basically, it's gone into place in so many communities that a lot of people will actually have less confusion now about when they go to a store, whether they have their reusable bags or not. They will have them. But I think that the enforcement is important. It's an area where it was not part of the recommendations as far as adding staff for enforcement. We do have staff that has been working on this program, that will continue to work on that program, so we will have them keep the records, make sure we make the phone calls, you know. At this time, we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of extra staff, but we will make it work.
Right. And I'd like to add a comment here, Councilman. I know you are a former police officer, or you're always a police officer if you're a police officer, so I want you to make, I want to make it known that we actually have progressive enforcement that will be pending here. First of all, I think the fact that we have a number of cities and L.A. County that is already involved in this type of ban, we, you know, have a lot of folks that are educated about this issue. And in this instance, we will also have an educational campaign. Dan Hackney, along with Ginger Paul, is actually present, will be working on that component solely. Total media PR outreach campaign that will take place, public service announcements, media, radio, TV. We also will have a number of flyers handed out to some of the small mom-and-pop stores in a number of languages. So I think the education and the fact that people are very familiar with this in other cities like, you know, West Hollywood and some of our surrounding cities will help us deal with some of the issues related to this ban before we get to enforcement. But there is a progressive enforcement policy, and it's going to be in Section 19, I'm sorry, 195.06, called Enforcement Section. And basically, the first offense is fine not exceeding $100. The second is a fine not exceeding $200, and the third violation is a fine exceeding, not exceeding $500. So, and then a fine shall be imposed for each day a violation occurs or is allowed to continue. And this actually could set a business up, using my former city attorney hat, for a 17-200 violation, meaning unfair or illegal business practices that the city attorney's office could take up.
And then the funds for the public relations campaign, where are those funds coming from?
We're funding that through our Citywide Recycling Trust Fund.
And there's funds in there for that?
Yes.
Okay.
We've allocated funds for that purpose.
Pardon me?
We have allocated funds for that purpose in this fiscal year.
And L.A. County, pardon me?
I'm sorry, sir. The funds for the violations that I just mentioned will be placed in the Citywide Recycling Trust Fund as well, so we will have resources there for people that continue to violate, if we have any violators.
And L.A. County already has this in place for certain parts of L.A. County?
Unincorporated areas, yes, sir.
And then we will be obviously the largest city, and then surrounding us, Beverly Hills, Culver City, Inglewood, Pasadena, Glendale, Burbank. How many of those are on board with this?
Actually, Culver City just passed theirs, right, recently?
I can't hear.
Pasadena, Culver City...
West Hollywood.
West Hollywood, the majority of the beach cities, Long Beach...
They're already, they're already on board.
They already have passed it. Not everyone has, but we certainly think that, you know, this will help support them if they're going to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Oh, thank you. And as I said, when we started the meeting last week, we heard the city attorney report. This week, we hear both, including the EIR. The EIR includes, although it gives us several alternatives, that the bottom line is that it's better to do something to ban plastic bags than to continue with the status quo. And it gave us a good analysis of the environmental impacts and noted that the proposed policy would have no significant negative environmental impacts that would require mitigation, and that beneficial impacts would occur for air quality, biological resources, ecology, and water quality and solid waste. So with that, let me say that this is a ten-year saga. Is it Sega or saga? Tomato, tomato? With the, with this issue, when I became chair in 2012, this was actually one of the first issues we heard in the committee so we could start moving forward. Here we are a year later, and as Mr. Coretz mentioned, we wanted to move this item with some council members who are still here who are interested in moving this before their term expires at the end of June. So we'll move this item to full council tomorrow, and if, with the concurrence of my colleagues, the motion would be to approve the city attorney report dated June 13, 2013, and certify the EIR and its findings that the policy has no significant environmental impacts.
Thank you, Councilman.
No objections? So ordered. Thank you very much.
All right. And thank you to our partners. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. You guys did a wonderful job.
Commissioner Mendoza, Enrique, Karen, thank you so much for your support.